Yeah.
Okay, seeing no public comment and no board comment, I am then officially closing the public hearing. Are you okay, John?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, Stephanie, I'm closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. And that concludes the public hearing. Calling to order the so he can co- so he can cooperative school board meeting on Thursday, June twenty sixth at five eleven P M. Vice Chair Jim Manning presiding. Board members attending board meetings via Zoom need to state for the minutes, the reason that such attendance was not reasonably practical for them and shall identify of any person's president at their location. John, anybody at your location?
Uh, nobody at my location and I'm I'm unable to be there. Uh, cause I can't be in two places at the same time due to my work.
Okay, thanks, John. Then Steph.
I am in the car with Dan V U.
Hey, Dan.
You say hi.
Dan, you have to put your fingers in your ears.
He's not on speaker.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, um, first order on the agenda to affirm the agenda. Did you guys see the the attachment for the agenda on policy B E E D D A? Rules of procedure and order?
Yes.
Yes, everybody saw it? Okay.
Yes.
Are these? Are these changes to this agenda? So I'm sorry, I keep getting texts from work.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Next issue is voting on the public hearing agenda item. So before we before we vote on it, is there any public, is there any board comment on? Comments from the public during the public hearing?
So I do have some feedback that I solicited from various union members over the last, uh, three weeks on this particular issue. And now with the Board of Selectmen up in Marlboro two weeks ago, uh, proposed, uh, this discussion today and sort of solicited their feedback. Um, and they were pretty adamant about not withdrawing from the special ed reserve funds due to a multitude of reasons. But the biggest one being, um, the impact if we did pull it out is so miniscule, it wouldn't make a difference. But it would shortchange the district if something actually happened next year and we would end up having to fulfill the shortfall from some other area. Um, they were a hundred percent on board with us not doing it and just taking the lesser amount um, from the unreserved fund balance at the end of the year, uh, to, uh, to offset the tax rate. And that meeting was attended by maybe twenty, twenty-five people and everyone was in concurrence.
Okay, great. Good feedback.
Yeah.
Chrissy?
I met with high thirty people, um, a couple of weeks ago that, um, of the conservative nature, I guess, uh, and really got no indication one way or the other, invited all of them to attend tonight. Um, but I don't know that rose to the level that they wanted to participate in the conversation. I just wanted to share with them that we thought it was important to give them the opportunity to participate.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Raj?
Nothing from the public. Do you have a follow-up question?
Uh, certainly. Um, John, any comments?
Um, I'm inclined to, um, not withdraw the funds. Or I I agree with Stephen O'Keefe's logic on this one and, um, like that sound, I mean, last year, as I recall at our last meeting, we were able to return more funds, uh, than we had anticipated. And this year it may be a little bit less. I think that's an ebb and flow. That's the nature of estimating budgets and I think our community would understand that.
Okay, thanks, John. And then Stephanie?
Yeah, so the few people that I heard back from or had conversations with is along the same thing that Stephen O'Keefe had heard, um, and it's not necessarily appropriate to pull money out of the Special Education Trust Fund just to cover this sort of tax rate stability idea. So, um, I think we've seen a lot of support for it.
Okay, great. And then I've heard the same thing from at least the one selectman that we talked to. We get a read from Amherst. Raj, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I think just said, maybe, you know, for the record, maybe talk about like what the other options would be here. So it's it's clear. But there's one proposal. What happens if we don't approve this one?
Yep. So it would just be, uh, um, right now, the projection is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars less to offset next year's tax rate, but um, that number will absolutely change because we don't have, um, final, uh, final estimate yet. So it will be what it will be. Um, we'll close the books and we'll have a final number and uh, I suspect it will that that shortage will decrease. So we'll probably be in a better spot than than we think.
And so i- is I think about like the Warren articles that normally happen and are are the 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 public is voting on do we keep the money and and put it into certain areas?
Yep.
Or do we give it back?
Yep.
In this particular instance, if I'm understanding correctly, there will be less than we projected. How do we, where do we scrape that from in terms of like, how do we like de-allocate it from the different things?
So the warrant, there there are sufficient funds to fund all of the Warren articles. So those are
Those those won't be
Nope, they're not impacted and they're sufficient funds to fund most of what we estimated as a tax rate offset. Um, so this is just potentially giving less back than what we estimated. That's it. Yep, which will will also change next year in the fall when we actually set the tax rate when we know exactly how much we get for adequacy and exactly how much, you know, we, um, we receive in other funding areas. We'll also ma- maybe make an adjustment on what we think we're going to get in interest income. So even when we estimate, there's another round of, um, known and then some estimation for next year. So it's it's not a precise something, unfortunately. So, um, so we're we're not in terrible shape at this point. I think I I do suspect that number will get lower and and maybe be completely mitigated. It's certainly possible. So this was just to present the board with the option because it has been just of, um, taking funds from, uh, from the trust fund to offset because there was an unanticipated expense this year, but um, this was really just to present the board with the option. So um, but yeah, that's that's really, that's the only impact.
Okay. Any commentary for Raj's questions or follow-up? Okay. Hearing none. We have, um, feedback that was provided by Mr. O'Keefe with regard to, um, how we handle the situation. Do I, I think I have to call for a motion, right? Do we have a motion on, um?
So before we do that, I just wanted to put some information into the minutes.
Okay.
Because, uh, the Department of Education announced five grants that came from the U S D O E uh, in terms of actual awards for New Hampshire for twenty twenty-five. And I know you're on the list. So Title One actually receives an increase for the preliminary two thousand twenty-five award of forty-six point three million dollars over forty-four point six. Um, Perkins, which is the C T E sort of component to that, was an identical match to twenty twenty-four. That's seven million dollars. The I D E A grants that's coming down from the D O E uh, is an exact match to where it was in twenty twenty-four at fifty-six point seven million. Title, um, nine part A, which is to support academic enrichment programs, an identical match, actually, it's a fifty thousand dollar increase at six point three over six point three in twenty twenty-four. And the last one, the McKinley Vento, uh, grant funding, which is basically homelessness challenges, uh, was an exact match at three fifty, um, posted this year and the award for three twenty-three now. First of all, since the Department of Education, um, and so one thing I just want to make sure before we clear for the minutes, there's really no increase for inflation with the I D E A brands. And so we know our costs went up over that same same timeframe. So if there's going to be an equal allotment for the state of New Hampshire and we may fall lower in the A calculation as a result of the new format, uh, it just really resonates why we should not tap into this in two thousand and twenty-four. I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, those the I D A dollars are precious dollars. No, all I heard was the owl meeting. Yes, I I caught with it. I heard most of it from Frank yesterday.
Yeah.
Are we taking minutes somehow? It's being recorded.
Recorded, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
So I I I will make a, um, a positive motion to support the withdrawal as recommended, uh, because it makes it easier for us for no voting purpose, um, to make the withdrawal of up to two hundred thousand dollars from the special ed trust fund uh, to offset the tax rate, um, for two thousand and twenty-five. Is that correct?
So you're you're withdrawing that or?
Or maybe a positive motion, yes, to withdraw up to two hundred thousand dollars to offset the tax rate for the deficit that we're experiencing uh, with the promised amount or pledge to
And then we'll vote for or against it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
I think we need a roll call.
Are you in favor, John?
Oh, you have to roll.
Yeah.
Uh, that's right. John?
And the motion is to withdraw the funds from the trust fund?
Yeah, he's gonna make, he's made a positive
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Glover, no.
Okay, Christine?
He is no.
Steph?
Uh, Brian, no.
Manning, no. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I just, could I just praise Amy and her staff for bringing this creative solution to our attention and giving us the opportunity to have this conversation with our community? I thought that was well done and please continue that type of, uh, creative thinking and and collaboration. It's really nice.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Amy.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you for mentioning that, John. Okay, um, could we note then at five twenty-one P M, Chair Brown came to the meeting and you could pick this up, came to the meeting and is now assuming her duties as chair.
Log in to
Oh, try, I'm sorry, I was trying to give you time.
And unfortunately, a James just texted me, he said, which room? I'm afraid he went to the ice.
Okay.
He was a, he was literally like a light ahead. On one oh one.
Yeah.
He just texted me. So unfortunately, I think he's going to find himself. All right. I know from the agenda.
And the owl's catching all the audio, right?
It is. Yeah, I'm hoping it did before. It's definitely working well now. I'm not a hundred percent certain it did before, but we'll see.
Okay. And Steph, where we are is
Public, yeah.
Public input.
Public input.
Well, we actually voted before the public, but there's no public here, so.
Well. All right. So then we have consent agenda where we have some draft minutes. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments about the draft minutes? Anything? All right, nothing, no comments are being made. Should I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second, uh, and roll call vote.
Oh, second was Christine Peters. I don't know if it shows.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
Manning, yes.
O'Keefe, yes. Whoop-dee, yes.
Right, yes.
He is, yes.
Mister Glover.
Glover, yes.
Okay. Then, uh, reports received, we have a treasurer's report. And, uh, I think CJ, is anyone have questions about that? No questions. Okay. Personnel. We have a
Just a point of, sorry, just a point of order on the treasurer's report. Aren't those normally in consent agenda? Do we have to approve those?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, maybe I'm misremembering that then.
Yeah, they're just the reports received. Um, so then we have a resignation in here for Eric Perry as a science teacher, uh. As you can see, it says it was dated six eighteen, effective immediately. So can I have a motion to accept the resignation with regret?
So moved.
Second?
Second. And a roll call vote.
Manning, yes.
O'Keefe, yes. Hoop-dee, yes.
Right, yes.
He is, yes.
Mister Glover?
Glover, yes.
All right. Then we have minutes or sorry, um, policies, that's what I'm trying to get out of my head. Um, there's policies B E D G, D A F, D I D, D J E, K F. And these are secondary, I know that correctly. For approval. Does anyone have any questions on any of these policies, any discussion items?
John, specific to policy K F, the use of school buildings and facilities, what were the changes over the existing policy or is this just a reaffirmation of it?
Um, the, um, I was just looking at that for the notes, uh, on it and it's, it says designate superintendent as approver of building use and some clerical edits. And I just wanted to make clear that the building use is use of school facilities for others besides school. That's what that, what's, that's what that policy is about. Um, so that was the the real uh, change. Um, I don't know that that was particularly material. It was just more streamlined and make it, uh, clearer. Is that your recollection, Stephanie?
Yeah, so what it, what it is doing is, um, Primex currently is one of the drivers of when a group from outside the school is wanting to use any part of the facilities, they're requiring a million dollar bond. And there's a lot of groups in town that are individuals that want to use the school and we can't get a million dollar bond.
Million dollar bond.
Yes. Um, so because, you know, personal insurance doesn't really give you that.
Right.
So, um, this gives the superintendent the the ability to override that if there is a group that does it. And I, I mean, I'll tell you, I will probably abstain on this because I'm the one that brought this forward. The representatives from Amherst want to hold a town listening session. Not Democrats, not Republicans, just the repres- representatives. And we can't do it in the school because we can't get a million dollar right or insurance.
But you should be able to
It's not Hillsborough County.
Not that. You should be easily able to purchase an event policy for the day. I do it all the time.
Yeah, but we don't, but it's a personal thing we want to do as a town.
No.
No, so this, and it's not just us. It's other groups have come for them that have wanted, so don't override him.
I'm super familiar with it. I've had, I've been, when I use the Intu Poll, there's many other places that I have to purchase it. It's like fifty, sixty bucks.
Yeah.
The representatives shouldn't have to pay fifty dollars to hear from their constituents. Maybe it's part of the argument material.
It's it's not just a
And my, and my, my only question is are we sure if something were to happen when a, when a group that's not the school is using the facility that our school insurance would cover that issue?
So what you're talking about, the event policy, I'm familiar with that too, and that would cover it. But there would need to be something because there's people here who are
Yeah, so if you have a group of people who come in and use this room today and they're not S A U employees and something happens, would our S A U, like the building insurance for this building, cover whatever would happen?
If there's an event with the public, then no.
And that's why I've been required to get standalone event insurance for a lot of things.
There's supposed to be a basketball game in the gym and a to me, the stands is injured. Where, where's the, is there insurance coverage?
Well, it depends on what, if it's our team or
No, I'm saying, so he didn't Sabers.
It's probably included in when, when they do a
It's
Yeah, they would do a whole thing.
Even though the individual that I'm referring to is not a direct participant.
Yeah.
So it felt and fell in the sidewalk walking to a basketball game with a varsity team.
I mean, I can tell you, one of our reps went to get insurance and they wouldn't give it to her.
So and that's it. So that I actually will agree with you that happens because so I pay quite a bit more for, um, liability insurance as a, uh, political organization right now and it's only going to get worse. And there are some groups that will deny you a policy. That said, if we, we as a board, well, while we might feel for that, if the, if the school property isn't protected against issues of people coming in other outside groups, and I'm not sure they're not, like, I I don't, I don't have the answer to the question. So that's why I would not want to vote on this until we have the answer to a question. If we allow an outside group that's not related to the school or S E function to use the facilities and something happens, does the insurance cover? Because if you invite the member of the public into our building, we want to make sure that if something happens, you know, the the handrail falls off the stairs and they go toppling over, that we are covered for that.
And so i- if I may clarify, John, you're saying the only difference between this and the existing policy are just scripter type issues, right? And so spellings, maybe a couple of name changes?
Uh, no, the the substance change was to to authorize the superintendent to um, off, uh, to, uh, offer a waiver, um, if i- in particular circumstances and situations, such as the one that Stephanie described. And that was not currently uh, allowed or what wasn't expressly allowed.
Did, John, in your, in the course of your, in the course of your conversations, did anyone request the information about who would be liable in the event that something happens during during a non-S A U, so he can use as a property?
So I have some information, but go ahead. Doesn't.
Uh, well, I mean, my under, no, that wasn't, um, the topic of conversation of the policy committee. I mean, I my general understanding was that if the building, the buildings are public buildings, if they're used for public purposes, then the, uh, then the district's insurance would cover that, but like, maybe that's an incorrect assumption, but I mean, direct department uses the facilities, that's not the school district. So maybe there's some agreement with the rec department to carry insurance in those circumstances for for, uh, classes or athletic events or whatever. Um, I don't know, maybe Amy, you could speak more directly to that.
Yeah, so so we asked in particular about this issue with the state officials, um, so Primex advised that, um, they they could obtain through an insurance agent special events coverage, which is basically a liability policy. And I, it sounds like you weren't able to do that. So
There are ones that were doing.
Yeah, so, um, Primex said they would hesitate to sponsor an event because of coverage as it would increase the district's risk. Um, so there, there is an issue with coverage because the members are not Primex members and therefore not covered persons under our coverage document. So that was why it it really would could be potentially be a judgment call.
So yeah, so
Well, he might, he might not know it. And one thing that you might be able to do that we've had success with is pulling a C O I with a additional co-insured for that debt that time.
Yeah. So, um,
but then that's saying we assume the liability for this outside group, which is
If we were an organization, we are, we can get, we can get coverage as individuals that are not giving us coverage.
So the They get covered. I do this all the time.
And if one organization, but anyway, I'm not going to get
So Prime, yeah, Primex's general counsel said that they, for this particular use, um, they could could allow the use without insurance because it appears to be the state officials seeking use in connection with their offices. Uh, the state doesn't carry insurance and declines to sign indemnification agreements. So it would be okay to waive the normal requirements if we wanted to cooperate with the request. Um, that said, you can still have them sign a use agreement containing the rules and expectations of using the premises. So I think the policy was just to allow for some flexibility, but, um, but Primex does not advise that we just waive insurance requirements for organizations.
Not in an effort to continue the same sort of line that I'm trying to work on with John. So John, the only thing I just found through a quick scan is the seventh last paragraph off the last sentence. The original policy says the board must approve any special request or exceptions to this policy or regulations. And it looks like the policy committee changed it to the superintendent must approve any special request or exceptions to this policy or regulations.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct.
What what I'm asking now in in based on a multitude of things, I say we pull this policy because there's going to be a couple of things that I think Jim and I are working on on another regard. They're going to require us to examine bigger changes to this policy. And I think that one change is not such a significant obstacle that we have to put in place now, uh, today, um, that would impede our ability to continue leveraging the community resources for our, our buildings.
And the policy as it stands doesn't prevent us from taking a vote to make that exception for that group of people.
It's at the board level instead of the superintendent. That's the difference. And so we continue at the superintendent level until we sort of figure out the other stuff that Jim and I are working on. Um, and then if there's something that needs to be adopted or amended in the policy, at that point, we can do this all at once and just be done with it.
I- is that something, Stephanie, that is an impending need, like you're planning it very soon? So we have our retreat. Do you need permission before the retreat?
I have to look, I have to do that because we were waiting to hear whatever happened with this policy before. I think because we wanted to do something in May and we couldn't.
So but you could have put on this agenda. Can we take a vote?
Yeah, we know at some point at the end of this discussion.
I think We don't have a date, but if you would give us the permission to we can do it because we would love to be able to
So my thought would be i- if if it's, and I don't know, like, I don't know if you if you do need to think about it more, Stephen, but if, uh, either either we would say yes, the elected officials ought to be able to use the facility for that purpose. Or we would say no, and we, I don't think we would care so much about data. We'd almost say just
Let us, let us come up with a date.
I don't know that if you're going to, you know, do it three times a year that we want to have
Right now, it's just once that we're trying to figure out.
So I'm not making a motion. I just
Yeah. I I honestly, I have no idea what you're talking about in terms of some of the things like why, why the schools over the library or all or
Because of
the file station
We don't
or the restaurant. I don't know.
We want more than fifty people.
So
This is, one of the schools is the only facility for over fifty people. Library, our library max is at fifty. So if I invite the whole town and I have seventy-five show up, I can't have any in the room.
Okay.
That's what it's about.
Nothing would prevent you from doing that based on the current policy. Like you can apply like any other organization entity to use school seller.
We did, we were told no.
Wait, 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 wait. Sorry. Is the discussion here about the policies themselves or with this particular policy and its approval or not approval?
That's what it's about. It's about
So it's not specifically to the representatives, so we could focus on the policies. And so do we vote on them individually?
We can do them individually. We can do it as a group if there's someone
Yeah.
I I think the the sense I get is there's no problem with the first four. We could leave those bundles and just vote on them.
Okay.
You can make, I think you just make a motion, make a motion to approve the four, but not the one and then
I make a motion to approve policy B E D G, policy D I D, policy D A F, and policy D J E.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
A second. Any other discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote, Mr. Manning.
Yes.
O'Keefe, yes. Whoop-dee, yes.
Right, yes.
He is, yes.
You can, if you're comfortable, we're voting on four of the policies that are in there to pass them or not.
But not, but not K F.
Because you just walked in, it's okay to abstain.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No, it's it's okay to abstain if you
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Mister Glover?
Glover, yes.
All right, so that will pass. And then policy K F, you want to make a motion on that at all?
Yeah. I make a motion.
Send it back anymore?
Oh, yes, I guess that we have to.
Yeah, we can make a motion like that.
We need to do something. We need to dispense with it somehow.
Make a, make a motion to send the the draft of policy K F, use of school buildings and facilities back to the policy committee pending, um, additional analysis and information needed to, um, update the policy.
Can we put a timeframe on that?
Um, or do we need
Our next
So it's the next policy. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if we really need a timeframe because
You can come back.
Difference is just who approves the waiver. That's it. And it's not a burden. It's not a high bar for an organization to submit a request for a waiver and they just have the school board vote on it.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a big issue at all. I think, uh, you know, just going through the current policy is is sufficient. And then all that stuff that we need to work out over the course of four months. And then we're going to have to partner with the policy committee to re-craft and create what this policy should actually look like based on that work. So why do it twice? So you, uh, sorry, in particular, the representatives, you and the representative not submitted a waiver
We, we asked, we asked to rent the facility. We were told no.
Who? Sorry, how about that?
It was, uh, the entire school district came from there.
But
But
Oh, for Amherst.
A K X, we're originally looking at using one of the
But first, so he can, there's been no attempt yet to seek this board's approval or exemption.
No, we're not looking at using. So he given, when they wanted to have one policy, it was, went through policy committee, I abstained there from voting.
No, no, I'm just saying specifically for your meeting, you're going to try to, try to apply.
We did. We did. But not for so he
If that's what you're right.
So I made
So I don't care, it does not matter, I'm okay with this discussion.
Well, let's take, let's take things like, let's take things compartmentalized, so we have a motion to um send it back to policy committee. I don't think we have a second yet, right?
A second. I'm so sorry.
That's okay, no, 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 it's, it's just So, let's vote, want to vote?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes, everyone has another comment?
Well, I was just going to throw in like uh not the, maybe we're already, anyway, we're just going to send it back, but I was just going to send back, like, what I would love to know from the policy committee is um what is the purpose of making the change? Was, is there a need for speed and uh because I think maybe the policy is good as written, it doesn't necessarily prevent someone, it just means that we all have to weigh in if we're going to waive something that if things went wrong, could end up being something we have to deal with.
Hmm.
That's all I have.
In, sorry, interpretation of the existing policy, how would this, the board vote on an exemption? Does it have to be in person at a
Yeah, after a board meeting.
So they have to wait.
Uh, but we could have a special board meeting at any point simply to vote on an exemption to yeah, thank you. And I can be honest with you, I probably, if I were the superintendent, would want that liability on the elected official versus my shoulders, because what happens if I pick this group that, yeah, I'll give them a waiver and all of a sudden all help prices. Right, and there's a lot of damage, and then the community's like, what the heck did you just approve?
Yeah.
So it it's just from a transparency standpoint, that makes sense, but I'm supportive of sending this back and probably discuss that with you.
All right, so let's, let's vote on it, Mr. Manning?
Uh, Manning, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
Whoop-dee, yes.
Fred, abstaining.
He is, yes.
Georgia, yes.
Mister Glover?
Glover, yes.
All right. So we'll have to get that back to policy committee. You want us to notify policy naming or?
Um, I can just let Chelsea know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so yeah, make sure that the information happens. All right, um, board correspondence. Uh, the board receives confirmation.
That was just the email I sent on the
Role of the board member.
Yeah.
Yes.
Read it, cool, cool stuff.
So they, yeah, there was a, an email sent by Mister Manning to all the board members just about roles of the school board members, so that can be entered into the minutes. I do not know of any non-public. And we have any public here to keep for second public comment section. Um, how, what time do we open up the meeting and probably we're good? All right, so um, thank you, wish a very good meeting.
So moves.
Second.
Second.
Second, quick roll call vote, Mr. Manning.
Manning, yes.
He is.
Whoop-dee, yes.
My guess.
He is, yes.
Georgia, yes.
And Mister Glover?
Glover, yes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.